Open the meeting, Monday, February 8. 10:04 at 6:03.
Lincoln's birthday.
Lincoln's birthday.
Happy birthday, Lincoln.
First up is approval of minutes.
They were minutes?
Oh, I gave them to you. I sent them over in the packet, that's why.
Oh, they're in online? I didn't know to look.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's right, I'll look online.
It's a long one.
Oh, it's verbatim from the YouTube.
Yeah.
I have no issues.
Yeah, it's very detailed on that.
Actually, did we already get these via email?
I did, I did. I sent them just after the last meeting, but in preparation for this one, yes.
I was gonna say, I did read them. I would move we accept the minutes of December 11.
You don't want?
Thank you for doing this first.
Did they tell you this is like a four-month thing based on what happens?
Yep.
Okay, you're okay with that? You're stepping up. Thank you.
It'll be fun.
I'm sure it'll be fun with.
Where the hell? Can you start training tomorrow?
I can, I'm working at home tomorrow.
Me too.
Because we're supposed to get a foot of snow.
Zero to two now.
I'm not saying anything, I'm working at home.
So is there anything you wanted to tell us before we do this? We know who you are.
No, no secrets, no, no. I'm not wanted, at least I don't think so.
And because the Board of Health interviewed and I'm on the Board of Health, I would ask to abstain from the vote.
Okay, we have a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation to appoint Susan Collette as Board of Health Admin Assistant.
Clerk, I think.
You're gonna list it as clerk?
I think it was listed as clerk.
Okay, as clerk.
June 30th, 24.
Till June 30th.
Second, all in favor? Official.
I'll be in touch tonight. I'll send you an email.
Yeah, send me all the, not that I don't love a good budget meeting. Yeah, send me all the details.
Thank you.
It's not the same, but I mean.
You know why? Because this is the one that it got altered a little bit at the last, they'll explain it. Yeah, because you didn't put in like level funds for the wages, so they just plucked in those numbers to make it even, yeah. So that's why it looks different.
And the phone line's empty.
And the phone line got changed, so those are the only, the board will explain that to you.
I was just looking at it, I was like, wait a minute.
Okay. Next is FY25 budget for the library.
On the screen.
Sam, you wanna go through what you got here?
So, yeah, some of these I had left empty and they're filled in now, which is fine. But I think the 20s, the, I'm looking at the part-time wages, the second line down, I think the number that's there was the number from last year, but then there was the special town meeting vote to increase, so that needs to reflect.
Quad register.
Just reminded to turn off all your electronic devices.
And I don't, I don't have in front of me the number from the special town meeting. I kind of forget what it was, 700. Yeah, something in that range. Yeah, that only other changes, yeah, the telephone, I think when we switched to my, when the account switched to MyTell, for some reason, we didn't actually get the increased budget to cover the cost of the increased phone costs. And it never, it just kept not happening. I think I put the increase in a couple times and it just, it got level funded every year. So that I had, what did I answer? 878, yeah, just the. 87824, I think is the actual cost for the, unless the cost is going up for the phone bills.
It has, it will be.
I just don't, I don't receive the bills on that one because I think they just all go down, so I don't, I don't actually know the cost for that one. The CWMI's membership cost is up just a small amount, 30 bucks this year. Building maintenance, I love the same office supply, the same lending materials, we can't calculate until we have the full budget because it just has to be 20% of the total budget.
Sam, we usually always want to plug a number in there, otherwise it's empty and that creates a problem when you look at it. Oh gee, that's suddenly at the end, when you bring in that number.
Gotcha.
Remember last year you explained the whole thing to me, how it worked.
That's fine.
And by not having a number there, the whole total gets screwed up for the whole year.
That makes total sense.
Give it to us, so we just plug that in as kind of a, about where you should be more based on the prior year.
I think otherwise it's pretty similar from one year to the next.
So a couple of questions that I have, if I could, should we go? Under the trustee stipends, you've already spent everything you have by more than $1,000, overspent it?
The trustee stipends?
Yes, I think something came in incorrectly.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's.
That's from the accountant's budget, so I'm not, I haven't gone and tried to research what it is, but.
Yeah, I don't ever use that number because my understanding from like just a year or two ago was the town had started taking over all payments to paid board numbers, so I don't use that.
And I just looked at it this morning to kind of see where you were at.
Right.
And it shows that you spent $1,378 there, so I didn't know why.
Gotcha. Yeah, I can go back through old recent warrants and check that.
Something might have been miscoded is what my thought was.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, too. I wonder if I could pull them up and look at them now.
And I was gonna ask you about electricity because you're almost out of money there already.
Yeah, we've been overspending on electricity for years, but it just. So I finally did ask for an increase there. The electricity costs are just gonna keep rising.
Do you have energy-efficient light bulbs?
We have, yeah, we had like an energy efficiency audit a few years ago. I think the major cost annually is we have air conditioning that we use.
You need your books.
Summer, yeah, but the prices are gonna continue to, I mean, that's my understanding, and Massachusetts' energy prices are gonna continue to rise for about a decade. So I don't, I don't know that I've ever requested an increase there just because, you know, we aim to level fund every year. So we've just been kind of doing what we can.
And for the Mars budget, you've actually spent all of that also?
Yes, that should be gone in one payment at the beginning of the fiscal year. Yep, that typically I submit that bill in warrant number one, and it's the full, and out in one go.
Just looking at the ones you were over on, in case you weren't paying attention to them, they didn't want you to know, look for an increase.
Yeah.
Not that we have the money, but you never know.
And I did finally get someone up on the library's roof last week, but I haven't received the official quote from them for the work. They said it looked like not a ton of.
Slate?
Yeah, not, not major slate, or some, they said, but they, they recommended that they power wash the whole thing, so.
You'll probably lose some slate when they.
Yeah, yeah. I have no idea how they do that whole process, but I haven't received the quote yet, so I'm still waiting on that.
And there's no leaks, right?
We haven't noticed.
Just around the windows?
The windows are the problem, yeah. We had a mason that came and looked and then blew us off, so I have the name of another mason now.
So the other question I had, we can talk about it, is the director's position.
Yep.
Has anything been done on that at this point, as far as, I know when you were in, a week or two back, it seems like maybe it was this last week?
Just last week, yeah.
You were concerned that you weren't finding qualified candidates to fill the position?
That's correct.
And the question, I think it was out there, was what would it take if you had to fill a position to get to, some that you think is qualified?
We were, yeah, we were hoping to re-advertise the position.
Right.
As a benefited position with a few more hours attached to it.
And just more hours, not additional? An increase in the hourly?
Not an increase in the hourly rate, just an increase in the hours to better reflect the actual workload.
You said that'll be 22,000, Don, for the benefits, could be, up to?
Around there, yeah.
Yeah, so the question we.
For the full year.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
The question we had kind of left you with, Don, was about.
This year.
Yeah, about this year.
Okay, I do have an answer. The extra insurance policy that we would carry has been used. When Fred came on full time.
It involves people.
Dare he.
We didn't have one left over, then.
We had a schedule plan left.
One, yeah.
Not family.
Okay, that's good to know. So, yeah, the trustees then can talk over what they want to do about that.
What if we run into someone who doesn't need the health insurance but wants the?
Yeah, how does that, how does that work if you hire, in the hiring process, if you have someone who actually doesn't need, you know, you can't ask that, can you? Like, how does that get kind of figured out?
At some point in time, after you've, after you've hired them.
Right.
You can ask them, do you need health insurance at that point, but not before?
Right, yeah. So that's, you can't, yeah, that was my thought.
And they can't use it as a bargaining chip to affect salary.
Seriously, if they volunteer, that they wouldn't want it?
Yeah, like at my company, I'm the only one that doesn't take health insurance, and the company pays $25,000 for everybody else to have health insurance, and I'd be like, well, how about you give me $25,000 more of my salary? No, that's a cost savings to the company.
And I would think, Aaron, that if you took someone on that didn't want it, and then six months later, they want it, you have to give it to them.
Yeah.
So even though they say I don't want it.
Yeah.
If, you know, if they're taking their spouse's insurance and suddenly their spouse decides to retire, then suddenly they want it, the town is then forced to offer it, so I think you have to take that into consideration.
And there is no grace period before they start or qualified to get it, you know?
Not there.
30 days.
30 days, okay, 30 days.
We could set the, we could set the date of the start date for the position as July 1.
And a life change in event can let them alter insurance throughout the year, so like a new hire or someone gets married.
Single to a family, anytime.
If it's life-altering, something changed in their status.
Or the annual enrollment, which is when?
Right, but if they miss the annual enrollment, say it's July 1st and six months later they get married, or four months later, they can change it then, they don't have to wait for a new, because it's a life-altering event that's changed.
So how does the town deal with that whenever they set aside a help, like money, they set aside the 22, not the 13?
They would set aside the full boat.
Yeah.
If it's not used, it's not used.
Right.
But, you know, mid-year, somebody decides they need it.
Right.
It's there.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the other benefits, you go over 20 hours, you're gonna get them anyway. Vacation time.
Oh.
County retirement.
Sure, sure, sure.
By statute, 20 hours and above, we have to do the county retirement.
Okay.
And it's not a choice of whether you want it or not, you have to have it.
Right.
All right, so the additional cost doesn't include the retirement fund costs and any plans like that, okay?
Yeah, that's usually 8% or 9% of the salary.
Is that regulated by the state?
Depends on when you were hired. You get people that hired 15 years ago, they're only paying 7%. New hires are paying 8 and 9.
Is it the employee paying or the town is paying that share?
Employee pays and we pay.
Are we paying a total of eight or nine, and the employee's paying a good portion?
Yeah, I mean, we, we pay over $90,000 a year into retirement.
And is that budgeted by employee, by department, or is it the town takes that under the treasurer?
Under the treasurer for employee benefits.
And you figure out based upon how many people are in that bucket?
We get a bill, actually, we should be getting it very shortly for FY25 from the Worcester County Retirement Board, telling us exactly what it's gonna be, and if we pay it right on July 1st, we get like a 2% discount. So we know well ahead of time what it's gonna cost. If you hire somebody like right now, that may not affect this, might go on to next year's.
What do you mean?
FY26. In a matter of weeks, we're gonna get the census from the county retirement. You haven't hired anybody that's on that census. They don't do it as you go along, they do it once a year. So you're probably pushing that cost off for FY26.
Well, I think the request we'd like to make is to increase it to 25 hours a week for next fiscal year, which I believe is a total of $40,950 then.
Which is about six hours more, would you really, would it be practical to reduce the part-time wages six hours? Or do you think?
That's our plan. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we have a total of 58 hours that we try and staff weekly, so we try and just maintain that.
If you offset with part-time hours, the part-time wage is less than the director wage. So it wouldn't be a one-for-one, is that correct?
It's not a one-for-one.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So if you, so you would have to do more hours or have some kind of increase.
Or the director.
Or the director. You'd have to do more than the six hours of part-time decrease, or you would have to add something to the director because if you take the six hours times the hourly for the part-time.
Right.
And six hours times the director, it's different.
Yeah.
I've never got the numbers in front of me, but it should be different.
But we'd be reducing approximately six hours of part-time wages.
Right, but the part-time wages are less than the director wage.
So we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't be, yeah, exactly, it wouldn't be a cost for cost, exactly.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it would just be hour for hour, basically.
But it won't be six hours additional part-time hours because in theory, the six hours that is increased on the librarian, library director, is gonna cover six hours that would otherwise be staffed by a part-time employee.
But you're spending more money.
You're, aside from covering the part-time, you're spending more money.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, but you're not spending, but you are reducing part-time hours because this body will take those.
Your budget still has to go up.
Oh, sure, not related to part-time though, but related to the director.
Because your increases are.
The director.
And we, earlier at the state we said it would offset.
That's a difference of 15, 30 cents.
Yeah, reducing the part-timers, we talked about it.
Now we do that times 6.
Times, I guess, 5.5.
So the difference between the director's hourly rate in the part-time is $15.36 that you would be saving on one end, but.
Paying more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to do the increase to 40,000, it's $9,009. So 16 something an hour is what you said?
1614.
1614 divided into the 9,000 will tell you how many part-time hours you need to reduce.
Yeah, I think it's 40.
If you're gonna reduce all those hours, can you?
Well, that's what I'm saying, she's gotta know what those equate to in hours before she does it.
Right, and I mean, it'll kind of be up to the new director, they're gonna have to, I've been working a lot of evening hours, I don't imagine someone's gonna want to come in and do that, so they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to deal with changing the staff's hours, and I don't know which, there's just two different pay rates between the staff, but I'm not sure which staff hours will ultimately get cut, so it's kind of a little bit hard to do the math, but it looks.
10 hours a week.
It looks like.
You also don't know if all the people who currently work now, if you get them altered to, if they work days, can they do evenings or vice versa?
We had a lot of changeover when Sam came in, and I'm expecting that the new person will build their own team.
It looks like about a difference of $46, that $100, though, the decrease of about $4,600 for the part-time staff wages, but I could, I could kind of try and do better math and, and think about it a little more, how it would be structured and come back, like email you with a better, just for the part-time salaries, so you have a number to go into the budget with. And the other thing I was gonna mention is something like, a lot of libraries have something like a part, sorry, a substitute pool of a certain amount of money, if a part-time person takes sick time or vacation time, because now all of our part-time people are technically eligible for sick time and vacation, although I'm confused about how much sick time they're eligible for, because it just says 12 days a year.
Yeah.
But like.
That's what it is.
Like, how many hours?
Right, what is their hours for each four hours, six hours?
We have one person who works five hours a week, so if you gave her eight hour, 12 eight-hour days of sick time, that would be.
It's based on how many hours?
It's based on the hours that you work.
How do you calculate it?
So if they only work two hours a day, they'd, one sick day would be two hours.
Okay.
Yeah, so retro to what they hourly.
What if they work a three-hour day, a 10, a three-hour day, a seven-hour day, and a four-hour day, what do you do then?
How much is it weekly, is that consistent?
Their day.
Yeah.
And that's what you're paying them.
Just for, just when they take the sick day, so a sick day could be seven hours or it could be.
Has to be, it's a day.
Okay, all righty.
Yeah, they were asking you before, does everyone have a very set schedule, and if that's the case?
They all do have very set schedules, so that's, that's like, that makes sense for sick time, except when you're trying to calculate how much money we might need to, well, are they gonna be sick on a Tuesday or are they gonna be sick on Thursday?
Right, that's, that's the problem.
But I think for vacation time, and it would change every year because some of them would stay longer and earn more vacation time, we'd need about $900 to cover all the vacation time for all the part-time staff, and I guess that's not including the director then, the director wouldn't earn any vacation time until six months in. I'm hoping, I was just trying to.
Wouldn't it come out of the budget because it's already appropriated, if they're not there, they're just gonna get paid for those days?
If they're getting paid, though, for their sick and vacation time, then there's technically no money for the person, the substitute that we bring in to fill that time so that we're staffing the buildings, so.
Are you bringing someone in to replace the director when the director's on vacation?
We try and have two people in the building at all times, so, yes.
Yeah.
Because you're one of the second.
Yeah, yep. So, yeah, it's, it would be a hard number to come up with, but I just wanted to bring it up in conversation because it's never something we've had before, so that's just coming out of somewhere else usually. Yeah, I guess I didn't catch, I didn't, I didn't put in the director vacation time at all because I don't know how much vacation time they'd be eligible for year one.
But that's not normally budgeted in the department, is it? Is that not budgeted in, is that budget under treasurer? Or is it budgeted in the salary cost of?
That's, yeah. It should be the other way, but it isn't.
Right.
Municipalities don't do that.
Could we pick the easy one first?
Actually, Fred's gonna be the easy one.
$5,821 special article, you still have that? It was for the server.
Oh, no, we spent that.
You spent it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We spent it back in, before the last fiscal year ended.
Did you use all of it, though? Because I remember that there was a balance, and then you said you wanted to keep it because I gave you the form to see if you wanted to return it to free cash, and you had said.
It was, when we talked, it was, I think it was one pool of money for both the new printer and the new computer for the library, and I had, when we had talked, I had bought the printer and the computer.
So I don't think that this reflects it.
But there might still be a small balance because it was, the computer cost was an estimated cost.
Right, and the article obviously has to be spent exactly for what it's indicated for, so if you don't need anything else, and if there's a small, then it would go to free, back to free cash.
Back to free cash, okay.
Yeah, I think there, I think the computer might have been slightly cheaper than we were anticipating.
So you submitted it with the account number, obviously it's massive.
Yes, back in June, I would mention, if near June.
And typically that gets done towards the end of the fiscal year, which the department head has to sign off saying that they can submit that back to free cash, we just can't say, the board can't say, send it over.
Anything else?
I'm not sure.
Anything either?
I'm good.
Also.
Oh, sorry, I lied. Your, your, all of your computers are some funky?
Yes, we have one computer that powers six stations.
So you do not, you do not have any Microsoft operating system?
Correct, yeah, it's all run on Linux, it's switching to the same, whatever the guys name this who run.
CMG?
Yep, it was more than twice the cost, just for the service, not even to buy the new hardware that we'd need to buy. So we stuck with what we have now.
So does it offer like Outlook, Office 365, so like, would a director have access to town email, like, how do you get town?
I think, yeah, I just use the web version, yeah. But, yeah, Microsoft products, it has its own version of them, they're not, like when we, like when I open Maribel's documents, they're like not perfect, I use, we use, like the library staff uses Google Docs, that's pretty much exclusively, just because then it's accessible easily. So, yeah, I don't know if that's a problem for any of your plans.
Also, the Google Docs, is it under a town of Oakham, Google site, or is it under a personal?
It's under the one that was set up when I took.
So like.
I never changed it, so it's, it is like FOG's library, but it's not at Oakham. But we, like what we use the Google Docs for is just like when we make flyers, you know, like, it's not sensitive town information that gets stored on there.
Is there anything on there, though, that would be really good to have for future directors that you've got documents you've created that are not on your personal device?
Oh, no, it's all on a shared, yeah, yeah, just, it's all, it's not shared with anyone, it's just all the.
It's accessible, though, to the trustees?
They don't need it, really, I mean, they don't, you guys, do you have?
I've seen this, I don't use it.
Yeah, they don't use it, they have their own, like they use their own personal stuff on there.
But it's, it's, you know, there's a. But it's, it's, you know, there's a icon for it.
This is, this is just like the light with the library staff uses for our day to day work.
And your staff could access the website if, let's say, there was a special login on the website for HR files or something like that. Okay.
Yeah, the computers function pretty.
But right now, we don't think it could get into SharePoint.
I could try.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind trying and seeing. I'm just wondering if, if at some point having a Microsoft based device.
Yeah.
Would be beneficial.
Could be, and the switch could be made at any time.
Just even if it's just one on the system.
Or some.
Yeah.
For the director.
Sure. Yeah, that, that would be an idea, a, a different computer that could run Microsoft.
And potentially, there could be funding through ARPA or something to, or something like.
You have anything else?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any update on the well?
I have no well, exactly. I'm still hoping by the end of the year it's.
We would love to be able to plan, but it's just impossible.
So sad to have not, like, not be able to just have lots going on, because you can't, I don't want the staff's water access to be eliminated in the middle of winter. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is the police department. All right. Hey, Fred, one, here we go. Line by line, what do we got?
If I can make a comment before Fred starts.
Yep.
I went through the line by line in detail.
Yep.
And if you do all those expenses, it's a net decrease of a hundred and sixty nine dollars. All the increases in the salary area. I mean, the, all the line items, even though he's moving things around between departments, he's not asking for anything. It's level funded. I mean, I played with it this afternoon for a little while and I was, basically, it's a one sixty nine dollar decrease actually from the prior year.
That's different than what we have.
That's what I came up.
On our revised, it shows a thirty seven thousand increase.
No, that's all salary.
Oh, all salary.
Yeah, the only thing to discuss, the finance committee already talked about this one. Yeah, we think to discuss.
Yep.
Is the salary. We're good with everything else.
Okay.
Just to save you some time, unless you feel you have to go through the heat, the telephone charges and everything else, but they're, they all come out to a net hundred and sixty nine dollar decrease.
Yeah, it went from sixty one thousand twenty six down to sixty thousand eight sixty six thirty five.
I guess my question is, how much was turned over in free cash?
He turned over five point some percent. He was one of the lower ones.
Okay.
Board of Health was higher, as an example.
But a very small number.
Yeah, but percentage wise, yeah. But he was, he were five something. I, I, I'd have to go back and dig it out, but I looked at it.
And do you have cases of like hand sanitizer that you bought at the end of the year just then?
I don't. I guess those are free for me. No, typically, though, we, uh, we buy what we need for annually for, you know, for the paper and paper products and some other stuff for clerical typically at the end of the year.
Yeah, I guess my only question was to go from like five percent increase, ten percent increase.
Well, those were just for particular lines.
For, for inflation.
Was when I put that on there, I should have had an explanation, a little better explanation of it. But when you take those numbers and you add them all up. So regarding the changes for the budget's expenses from FY twenty four to twenty five, overall request was decreased by a hundred and fifty nine sixty five is the exact number, unless you round it up. So that was basically level funded. I just moved the money around within the expense line items to give the lines that I need the extra money.
And we looked at the expenses and I think it is in the right place. And again, I just, I spent some time on this because I was curious where we were going, then I realized, okay, the whole question from the finance committee is gonna be what you're gonna do with part time salaries. It's a push.
I did draft a proposal for the part time, and I did give an alternative if we felt we couldn't afford the initial request.
I think I just left Manhattan again. Oh, yeah, I did.
So five percent?
I would have seen it when I reached out my water next.
So five percent was about fourteen thousand dollars of the total budget?
I'm sorry, wasn't.
Five percent would be about fourteen thousand dollars. I, I. That's a, that is what five percent is of two hundred and eighty seven.
Yeah.
No, but it wouldn't be the total budget. It would be just the expenses. Salary, salary usually gets spent, spent out, right?
I'd have to go, I can't answer that, Fred, without looking at the numbers. I think I used.
Yeah, last year's part time and full time wages were spent out.
I think I just did a line, year end, year end.
About five percent.
And it was about five percent, I remember. Because I was looking at everyone that was over and he was just slightly over.
Okay.
Because your question the other day piqued my curiosity as to how many people, who, who were the big turn, turn ins and?
Well, I, I just, it, it goes to the point of, you know, we don't have any money, but we've turned back one point four million dollars in three years in free cash. So there's at least, there was at least fourteen thousand ish in the police department budget that was budgeted that couldn't go to something else that maybe we needed.
Could have been put to a better use.
Yes.
Might not have, it could have been.
Yeah.
Here's the thing with that, Aaron. You have to be careful, because I have unforeseen circumstances with like investigations or natural disasters. One year, we spent the budget right out because of a natural disaster. So we have to have a little buffer in there, so we have enough money to roll through those events in case they happen.
We, but we do have methods in our system to allow for that. But when we, when we're doing our budgeting and we say we can't afford email, because we budgeted the max. If there's, if we're turning over four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe we should be looking at where we're budgeting. So that we, we're not thinking we don't have any money to provide essential services that the town hasn't been funding.
Possibly, but we're going down every year. I mean, if you look at what we had right now, trying to remember the numbers, if we take the school budget as presented in their preliminary look, assume they make no changes. Now, I personally think they will make changes. They have every year. They'll probably try to knock off a half a million dollars or something at least. And you look at the town budget. Town budget's an increase of about nine percent, if I recall, right now. Again.
That's what you said.
I don't have.
Yeah.
But it was at nine percent based on everything that was submitted. In the Quavon district, it's over about nine percent. If both of those stood, we would use up all of our free cash that we currently have, which is two hundred and some thousand. And you'd be taking money out of stabilization. That's really poor budgeting practices. I mean, it really is. I mean, the, 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 and I know you know this, I'm kind of preaching it to myself, but it's, you know, the, the revenue is supposed to fund the town budget. And then free cash is for one time things like buying new chairs. I mean, I, I know you use Opera for that for the last few years, but that's, that's sort of the role free cash is expected to have by the state. And so while you say we've got money there, you know, is it, should you put it all into the budget? Do you need some of that in case, you know, the highway department has a truck that blows up, an engine or transmission or something? So I'm just, again, I'm just preaching caution as we go forward here, because you're, 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 you've seen last year, we took some of it out with the school hit. We would use up all of our free cash right now if the budgets that have been submitted were approved. You'd actually be negative.
The dairy gazette this week, I think I gave you the numbers, they started at nine point one nine percent increase.
Right.
For us.
Yep.
They're down to four point oh.
No, they're not. They, they, what Cheryl said is that if we reduce the forty point eight forty million eight hundred thousand by a million, if we do, she said, if, she didn't say we're going to. She said, if we do reduce it by that million, it would go down to four point something. But they haven't decided to do that. She was asked a hypothetical, and that's what she responded to. And that's how it was reported. If you read it carefully, that's what it says. She didn't say we've agreed to take a million down. She said, if we take a million down.
They said they're voting on it.
Yeah, it looks like they're, they have.
They haven't yet.
Sharpened their pencils.
March eleventh.
Yeah, but they haven't. I mean, you don't know if they'll, they, again, I don't think they'll vote to take a million down. They'll do something like half a million, four hundred thousand. They'll have reasons why they can't take that full.
Nonetheless, if they do four percent, that's still out of our ballgame.
Oh, yeah, it should be down around two and a half.
Hundred and four thousand dollar increase will, we can only raise eighty eight thousand.
We had an increase of two point eight five percent revenues this year projected, and it's about a hundred and twenty five thousand total.
With new growth?
With, with everything. That's everything.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying that. Yeah, if you say the two and a half. That's just a.
I, when I mentioned two and a half, it does that to me, too.
I moved too quick. But, but I, I ran it the full thing. If you take everything that Lori put together, because I was working with her on the revenue thing, there's a hundred twenty five thousand total that you could increase. You're right, the two and a half was around, I used, I rounded everything up around.
Around eighty eight and then.
Yeah, I was right. I used ninety in my head, just.
Thirty thousand for growth.
But the town's looking for more than that already, and the school's looking for more than that. So again, it's it's, it's, it leads to long term problems.
Oh, yeah.
It's, you know, it's, it's, you know, when you think of all the things that you talk to, well, I talk to my kids about, you know, don't spend, don't live on your means, don't, don't start writing checks that you can't cover. Don't use your credit card to cover stuff. Don't take your 401K money and cash it in to buy a new car. Let it ride. And that's kind of the whole thing I'm worried about that we're moving towards. If we keep spending it, you know, last year, if you remember, Don, we got pretty aggressive with the school at the rates they were at. We said, we were at what, one point one or something.
Right, right.
I mean, we're, we're higher than the school was last year, and it's an increase, again, being requested, not, not yet agreed to.
Yeah, 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 no, I get it.
But I just, I just, I just worry about it, you know, and, and need to worry about it. So.
And that's kind of why I'm pushing back on going five percent, ten percent. Come on, on this budget.
Yep.
On all the budgets.
All of them. All of them have to be a little.
Because I.
More closely.
I, I think we have it personally. I, I don't know that we've prioritized essential things that we should have been, like employee raises. Over, you know, some of the nice things to have. And so, you know, that's kind of how I'm looking at this is.
Yeah, if you look at it, Aaron, on percentage change by, by, I mean, I grant a percentage change by every department, you know, your, your percentage change is minus seventeen percent for the board of health. That's the biggest decrease. But I mean, you've got, you know, a number of them, you know, cemetery, thirty one percent, council on aging, twenty six percent. I mean, we've got some pretty big increases. You know, police thirteen percent, but thirty seven thousand dollars. You know, again, Fred's got a yeah, thirty seven thousand, but that's all in salary.
Yeah.
You know, you've got.
There's option two, which we, which we reduce that.
I'm getting off track, I'm sorry.
And, and I, and I know when we met for the first time on this, we weren't debating the pros or cons of the presented budgets. But I think certainly when we get to that point.
Right.
There would be pencil sharpening that we would be recommending.
Yes, exactly.
To not necessarily go with the proposed.
Yep.
And then we turn in our recommendations to FinCom and then
They can.
They can sharpen their pencils even more.
Trying to get to a point of agreement. We really have, the last couple of years, we've done pretty good, being in agreement before we get to the town meeting.
Yes, and we like to do that.
The people like that.
We had enough time, weren't.
Whirling.
Years I was on, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not as much fun.
No, I agree.
To be at the meetings, they just.
Yeah. No, we've been doing well at coming in together.
And, and I apologize that this looks like it's the police, the police department budget. It's not. This is my learning and how we budget. And that was just happens to be the first one that I was looking at.
I'm still learning, in my opinion, the what, the what there. But anyway, so that, that's, that's, I kind of got us off track, but I, I did think that the police budget was very reasonable, other than what are we gonna do with the part time wages?
Okay.
Get, get back on the police, I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is this? Okay, it was thirty four thousand five hundred and nineteen. Okay.
So the first item is the chief's salary. It's increasing to ninety three five. That's my contract.
Okay.
So. The full time officer, we level funded for now, until we figure out the raises. So that's sixty thousand three hundred. Part time salaries, FY twenty four says fifty four thousand four sixty four. Increased to eighty eight, nine eighty three. That's the coverage.
Yeah, that's the increase of the seventy two hours weekly.
But you had submitted kind of summary of the, how you did the calculation.
Seventy two hours a week, and then of course, holiday coverage, thanks to employees, sick time coverage, which was a hundred ninety two hours a year. That's between Kevin and I. So if either one of us called sick, we had to backfill in part timer. And training hour coverage, so I have forty and Kevin has forty hours of in-service that we have to attend. Granted, some of that's done on the, on the computer and it doesn't cost us any money if we do it while we're on duty. So some of that money is would be turned back if we did do that. But there are other trainings that we have to do in person. And that requires us to drive to whatever location. It's usually eight hours a day. And that's how we get, I mean, Don knows exactly what I'm saying. You, you know, you have to get that training done that way to meet MPTC standards. Miscellaneous investigations and unforeseen circumstances. You notice between the seventy two hour a week and the fifty two hour a week proposal, everything below the number of hours is the same, because sick time coverage, holiday, all that's always gonna be the same.
Fred, when you go to coverage, if you do the fifty two hours, what hours would you not have coverage?
So, well, I would have coverage seven days a week counting the full time employees. So I would have only sixteen hours a day.
Right, but, but that's what I'm saying. If you, if you got the additional, you said you have what?
That would be Monday through.
Friday, Saturday, or seven, you said, you don't.
So the, yeah, the additional would be Monday through Sunday.
Right.
Evenings, but on the weekends, it would be sixteen hours each day. So it'd be thirty two hours on the weekend, right? And then the rest of it would be Monday through Friday, six to two or seven, B to three, A, whichever we find works better.
So you would not have coverage, you mean, the two or three until?
You would have no coverage after midnight, basically. You'd have two offices on from six to midnight, which would negate us calling other departments for mutual aid. So then we'd have, you'd have your own backup and you'd have another set of eyes in town.
So do you have any data that shows how many calls get responded to by surrounding towns or somebody else from the midnight till five AM or four AM when you go back on duty?
Well, no, I, I am the one that responds to the calls after midnight, and unless I ask for mutual aid backup, I don't get it.
So how, how often does that happen?
Uh, more often than you'd think. It's happened several times with me. I had one kid.
But I mean, it's tracked somewhere. You must have.
Oh, yeah, it's all. Oh, yeah, it's all in it's all in IMC.
So is that a number you could provide?
I could probably pull it out, but that that program is a difficult one to negotiate, so.
And I'm just wondering if it's once a week, once a month, five times a week.
Get a hold of Mike. Moriarty. Mike Moriarty can pull all the stats you want up.
Okay.
Whatever range you want.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to know all the the shifts, what's the average volume.
That'd be good.
I could have brought you in a year to year comparison on what we've done for calls, but it'd be about probably six pages deep for each each year. And it gives you every stat on what the call was, you know, racial profiling, everything.
He can give you a high level.
But he can just give you the time between a certain.
Yeah, I tried. I tried to make graphs, but I just couldn't get the machine to do it right.
I'm gonna use the graphs.
Yeah.
That worked my time.
Yeah, no, it was difficult. I was I finally gave up on it.
The high level thing you could get.
Okay. But if I was to say off the top of my head to answer Alan's question, I'd say it depends on the time of the year. It happens a lot more in the summer than it does in winter. So during the summer hours, I've responded by myself to party calls, two o'clock in the morning. Campground disturbances, our population doubles in the summertime.
I think it would help sell your proposal, just to say, you know, you can, as you can see on Friday nights in the June, July, August period, almost every Friday evening, there's a late night call. You know, just to just as just as David, this is here's why we need to do it, instead of just saying it's a lot. I think.
No, that's true. It's true.
And this is a philosophical decision of whether or not we find we staff midnight to
Right.
three or midnight to six, and I think that's a bigger question, which needs to be supported by data.
What are we doing with the admin position?
I think it needs to be eliminated.
When you say eliminated, are you taking eight grand out of this budget and putting it somewhere?
If eight grand is in here, my understanding is it was supposed to come out.
I think the minutes you had on it last year, Don, is basically there was an agreement when Brad was still on the council that it would go for a year and then it would be revisited. So I think it's fair to revisit it. I don't have an opinion on it. It's up to you guys, but I'm just saying it's I know that was on the table last year, and I think you you guys might have been good on it.
We did.
You did, okay.
My thought is the eighty one hundred could go into that part time account to help support this.
It could, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, no, that's a good thought.
While I'm looking at this, I just noticed something else. On the expense line item for training, there's twenty two thousand dollars in there.
Yep.
You're not spending anywhere near that.
Not at the moment, no.
Probably won't, because now everything is kind of settled down with the post commission, because that's why we put it in there.
Right.
As a post, and we didn't know.
Right.
What if you took eleven grand of that? Still have eleven and move that into part time salaries also. So you'd have nineteen thousand from within going in there to support this, help support this.
You've spent fourteen thousand in training, almost fifteen thousand in training this year so far, it looks like. The prior years were six and seven, so.
Or some amount, you know. That's up to you.
And well, truth be told, I prefer to keep my admin assistant.
We know that. We know that.
And Alan, have you followed the municipal empowerment bill in that there's additional revenue that towns, should they adopt a by law change, could raise taxes at the local level, like the lodge, short term lodging?
I don't want to say I've followed it. I paid attention to it. We had the discussion, you had the discussion in a prior meeting, but far back it was wasn't that long ago about, you know, the campground possibility and things like that. So I mean, I and I've I've seen it briefly on the news talked about, but I don't want to say I followed it and I've tried to understand the detail of it.
Because I I think there's a direct connection between potentially staffing summers, weekends, and this, I mean, there's an added cost to this community to have campgrounds, to have short term lodging. And so should we sacrifice other vital town services when we have an opportunity to look at non residents who come to this town and increase our costs? And so I I think that is something that we should look at. And I know the assessors did attend a seminar on it, all the the new local options. And that's the one that I'm particularly interested in learning more about.
I get that. You you probably know more about it than I do, certainly, and I said I'm aware of it, but that's about it. You know, my 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 thought, Aaron, is, you know, when I think about it, I mean, I'm I support the idea of having, conceptually, the idea of having more coverage for the police. And you have to prioritize that. I mean, is it more important, yeah, I'll just use the two we've done tonight, the police have additional hours of coverage in the evening, especially in the summer, or that the library gets some new computer that lets them run SharePoint? I mean, you got to prioritize what's more important to the town, and I think the police is pretty high up. I mean, the police and the fire, you know, and then the highway, the the three that keep the people in the town safe. And then everything after that is of a lower priority, even though some of it's very good. And and that's that's something I would would think of this. I'd like to find a way to do this. I just thirty seven thousand's a big chunk of money to come up with when we didn't have it. But Don already came up with like half of it. I would just just throw it also. I think that, you know, a lot of this stuff, the way the finance committee was looking at it, we met the other day, is you know, we really don't want to start negotiating or discussing what numbers we can change until you kind of get to a point where here's what we think the budget's going to be, and then you got to start prioritizing where you're going to agree to some increases and where you're going to maybe say, as you said, Aaron, the ones that turn back a lot of money, maybe we need to go to them and say, let's 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 cut this back by five percent or ten percent. But I don't think you can say yes or no to something like what Fred's presenting yet. I don't think we're I'm I'm not at that point. I mean, I want to approve. I want to say we can do it, but you got to figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah.
I don't want to take, you know, pay for it one time out of opera funds or something like that, and then it's just four.
And then you can't, you can't sustain it after.
Yes, that's right.
No. This is twenty twenty four. We should have twenty four seven coverage. Absolutely.
I mean, we just got full time police officers back.
In the last two years, Jen.
Again, and, you know, twenty twenty two, we we didn't have that, so.
Ten years.
I know.
We had it was three.
I just said.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, I was going to propose another full time position as an op for an officer, but at this point, it didn't make any sense to me to do that. That's why I opted for the the part time proposal. At least that'll get us in the neighborhood for a year or two, and then we can build off of that.
Well, in the last two years, Fred, two years ago, we increased you by thirty one thousand, and last year you were increased by thirty seven thousand. So I think the town has been, as you said, recognizing the need and the importance of coverage. Those are some pretty big changes. Now you're talking another thirty plus thousand. Over three years in a row, that's a pretty big change from where we were.
Oh, yeah.
What's the actual number if you reduce it by, reduce it to sixty eight thousand twenty seven twenty?
Under part time?
Yeah. Instead of eighty eight thousand nine eighty three twenty, if you reduce it to sixty eight twenty seven, what would the difference be?
Okay, what was it again? That you want me to reduce it to?
Reduce it to sixty eight thousand twenty seven twenty.
Thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty three.
That's the difference? So instead of thirty seven thousand, it would be thirteen thousand?
It's a third. It's a third.
That doesn't sound.
It's a thirteen thousand five hundred increase from last year's budget. So you want us reduce the
From eighty eight.
Five sixty three.
Sixty six. It's like twenty two thousand.
Twenty three, twenty.
Twenty two, twenty, almost twenty three.
So the difference in it wouldn't be twenty seven, thirty seven thousand, it'd be twenty three thousand? I mean, if that's more realistic, and quite honestly, that would get me Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night for coverage, which is really the hot nights of the week, especially with the campgrounds. And that's why I gave the second big alternative to it.
And while we're building this route, you redirect the money from the administrative assistant that cuts us down to fourteen nine to have your plan work.
I just think that I heard you say thirty thousand, thirty thousand at the expense of other departments. So I was on a call recently, and I was laughed at that Ocam funds its board of health as little as it does, like among the lowest in the state. And like somebody said, you can't be serious. And so like there's a I think it needs to be equitable and maybe phased phased in to to go from, you know, nothing to two is long overdue. But then to go to this at the expense of other boards and departments, I'm not sure is fair.
Yeah, it's a valid point.
So they take those two numbers.
And that's where sacrifice, I think, has to be, we have to sacrifice maybe something we'd love to have, which I think was negotiated last year for that that one position.
If you took a couple thousand out of that twenty two, now you're down to twelve or eleven. Right?
Mm hmm.
How much under the two and a half cap are we, Alan?
I'm sorry.
How much are we under the two and a half cap?
By under.
We're not taxing it to full two and a half.
Oh, oh, I can't answer that without looking. It's not a number I thought of lately.
In the past years, it's been like forty, fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, okay.
Remember, we've got the fire truck being added in, but that's
That doesn't.
That's small, but the taxpayers.
And doesn't it help our?
That's an override.
Yeah, but the taxpayers notice. I was just thinking if if you have more increases for the taxpayers to notice the increase.
The taxpayer should be paying the two and a half percent. It hasn't been for at least the five years that I looked up.
They have not.
And that has left two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars not raised.
And the reason.
We could handle the school. We could handle all of this stuff.
Who's making the decision for them not to pay the full two and a half percent? The three of you.
That's my point.
It's, yeah, recommendation from the assessors and.
You know. Because I don't think we ever drill down onto that.
We I I get it. It's been, like we're talking right now, it's been kicked around.
Been kicked around, but never really.
No one's ever really spent a lot of time on it.
Spent time on it, and I've spent some time on it.
You could.
And you know, I'm not I'm not talking overrides. I'm talking just doing what the law says, two and a half percent.
It's like we're forcing ourselves to be poor.
More frugal than we need to be.
And in I I tried to look at other area towns, and then you look at, you know, our, I think, according to the DLS site, we pay about one point four percent of the average income in Ocam compared to Hardwick, which is fourteen percent. And we're the like the bottom five in Worcester County for tax rate.
Yeah.
And and then we don't have, we can't have an administrative assistant for the police department. We might not be able to have a computer that would ensure employees have access to important information, like so at what point do we do what we're legally allowed to do and should be doing to support the operation of a corporate, a business, I mean, a municipality?
Again, that's just been the decision the big board of selectmen has made since I've been here. I mean, you've never, to my knowledge, you've never done the full amount since I nights, my six years sitting here and.
And and boards and departments have paid that price.
Yeah, they have. Now, again, I go to tax.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
People who live here like it that way. I mean, some 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 may wish they had more services, but I think there's probably quite a few that if you ask them, would you rather have your rates increased or have this?
Exactly.
They would say, don't increase my rates. And again, it makes, you know, it's 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 not an easy answer.
No, it isn't. Not at all. In the state.
But what we can't, we're not going to be able to continue to complain about not having the ability to raise money for the school budget and inflation of municipal costs. If we haven't been.
Doing anything about it.
Right. So what's the long term solution? It's like we can't keep on doing the what we've been doing, because there is going to come a point in time where it's going to have to be another override, and that's.
Exactly. Because we can see that coming very soon. It's it's not too far in the distance.
Yeah.
If we don't do something.
Didn't the school get cut from the governor's budget?
It did. They did.
Yep.
Now, what sense does that make?
And and rural communities took a bigger cut than the urban communities.
Right. Right.
So we have that rural committee, you know, that's supposed to be better for us.
Money.
What's that?
They figure that you can tap into that per household money per cat, you know.
How about they fund what they tell us we have to fund?
Correct, yeah.
Exactly.
All this stuff is unfunded.
Yes.
Look what they did to the police department for the last decade.
Yep.
Horrible.
Yep.
Yep.
Tons of unfunded mandates.
I don't really have any questions for it. I mean, I I I hope we can find a way to at least get you some of the hours that you want to cover some of this, at least on the Thursday, Friday, Saturday or something, but I I don't think I I can certainly wouldn't commit to it for the finance committee yet that we can do that, but.
Yeah.
I think we'd like to figure out how to get there.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I wouldn't say no to it. It's not unreasonable to get there.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't either.
Right. Okay.
Well, I mean, over the last year, we functioned fine. I mean, there was stuff that we could have added, would like to have seen, but even if we were level funded for FY twenty four, it wouldn't.
The thing about you and fire is, no matter what you've funded, you've got to respond.
Right.
You've got to respond.
Oh, I know, and that's what I've been doing up to this point.
Yeah, I know. Tell me about it.
I think the other side of that, Don, is the reality is that the town is not going to let them not respond. You know, we would find the money.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, the you you'd call a special town meeting if you had to to get the money if we ran out of the finance reserve money.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's 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 the reality.
Right.
And you may not do that for the one of the other committees.
Right, right, right.
True.
Without naming them.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
But to the point of making sure we're looking at all revenue options, I think we we should look at that, including the the optional lodging and what potential non, like we, let's not increase the tax rate on Ocam residents, but if short term rentals are bringing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we can apply a food, which we don't have, which really would only impact a couple of businesses, but it's the consumer, and if we could apply a up to, I think, seven percent lodging tax, that's revenue that wouldn't have to be put on Ocam residents.
Right, and it would not impact the campground.
No, it would not.
Just pass it on to the individuals that come in with their campers.
Yeah.
Do you know how much money that is? I mean, do you have any clue? I don't either. I mean, I Cory may know, but I don't know if it's something he would want to share.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how you figure that out. Because they don't.
Because I don't think they do any public reporting.
Then I've I've never seen anything in the paper, anything like that, where they say we had X number of people in it or anything like that.
I mean, I just, you know, you look at campgrounds and you can, you know, through public information, you can see their fall, and you can also look at the average cost is a night.
And it's the kind of thing.
They fill the capacity every year.
I mean, you could work into it at a, you know, if you did a, I don't know, two and a half, three and a half percent year one, and then you say, okay, it's going to step up over a period of years so that their customers aren't turned away completely from the town, saying, well, we're going to go to Coldbrook Midbury because they don't charge us.
I just have a feeling that other towns and cities are in
We're shaped.
We're shaped, and, you know, they're probably already there. There are, I know Barry's already charging a a food tax. So, you know, we opted not to, but again, at whose expense? I think the departments and I think the departments and the taxpayers for services. And that would have to be a bylaw, I guess, that would have to be passed if we did that.
Yeah. Fred, do you got anything else?
I think that's it, other than, you know, all the great stuff is coming to fruition. So we should have our new radar sign loose in twenty, Thursday now, they.
Thursday?
Yeah, they, they went from the fourteenth to the fifteenth because of the snow, so.
Or lack thereof.
But yeah, we should have that Thursday and I'm on target for March first as far as deploying the cameras go.
Okay.
So.
Good. Sergeant Tucker was on a ladder on one forty-eight, replacing a battery.
That's his assignment. Takes care of the radar signs.
Where's the new sign going to go?
Well, I think the first, well, it has to go on one forty-eight.
Yeah.
It has, and that's part of the deal with the, the army, basically. The power of transportation. So it has to go down there for, I think it's three weeks a year. And so many, you know, so many hours of recording that has to be uploaded to the DOT and then we can use it any way we want. So I would say probably in the thirty-five mile an hour zone for a little while. At least a week.
Okay.
And then we'll figure out the other two weeks that we'll put it down there and we'll go from there. I'd like to plant it right outside the highway department near the claw blade. People fly down that road all the time. I'm like, the police station's right there. They go whipping by.
They know they're not there, though. Well, we only have one officer on duty.
Take me off to midnight.
Yes.
And do I have to midnight, yeah, that's rough.
Can we back that up and mute the line?
Thanks, Fred.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I got, I got no questions.
I'm awesome.
The Board of Health, we did post-meeting and both Diana and Ani are on the call. And so I think.
Switch to the board.
So, yeah. I'm happy to recuse myself from discussing as a member of the Board of Selectmen on this one. We could ask Diana and Ani if they're able to answer any of your questions, whatever you feel is better.
And made up the budget.
The, the board voted on it.
I, I have no questions on the board health budget. I mean, we threw it as a finance committee and you took a, you know, I, I, I realize you're spending well within your means, so even though other towns may make comments about the lack of a budget, you seem to be spending what you need right now and taking a two thousand dollar reduction, which is what you proposed, the Board of Health has proposed. The Finance Committee went through it, we said, okay, that's, you know, if you don't need it, this is exactly what we're talking about, of turning it back in instead of keeping it in your pocket and somebody else then not being able to use it, such as the police, you know, so it's, we, we, we were, we were happy to see it. I did have one question. What happened in twenty-two? Was that COVID? You had, your, your expenses went up to sixty-five hundred for that one year.
We were funded because I believe, so prior to COVID, the Board of Health expense line was three hundred dollars and it had been three hundred dollars for twenty years with really no services. And then COVID happened and I believe there was a special town meeting that increased it to fifteen hundred. Nope. In the annual budget that was being worked on at that time in March of twenty, it was increased to fifteen hundred
Okay.
for the first time. And then town meetings subsequent, so in twenty-two, it was put in for sixty-five hundred.
I, I guess I was wondering something, I mean, I assumed it was somehow tied to COVID when I saw it because
Yeah, it was.
Change from the, any other year I looked at, but it just caught my eye, but really there was, again, we, we, we were happy that you have a reduction coming in and we moved on.
And I'll just tell you that the, the reason why there was such shock amongst the, the people on the Public Health Coalition is towns are supposed to provide, to meet all of the regulations, are supposed to provide for the inspectional services, have a public health director. And O-Cam just never did. Basically, if there was a complaint, it, it is what it is, we don't have that service, we can't really help. And so the Leicester Regional Public Health Coalition came in and said, if you join us, the state is giving us funding to supplement what all these towns already have. Well, O-Cam had nothing. All the other towns have a public health director, have an agent, have an administrative assistant to do all of the work. And so they're giving a, a much smaller percentage. We're basically getting a hundred percent of public health.
At low cost, very low.
Very low, yeah. So it is, I don't think it's any different than how we funded Council on Aging is bare minimum because you had you doing all the work for all those years and then you, costs go up. So that's, I think, was their surprise, was that how were we doing public health? Well, nobody really knew what public health was until COVID. And so, and then the state, you know, had more regulations since then that we are supposed to enforce. So we're getting all of the services from the state right now for public health. And the expenses, the reason why they weren't used last year was because, honestly, we spent, I mean, personally, I was the administrative assistant for most of the year.
I remember that.
And I just didn't have the time to put into doing the research to see what we could do. And we, we did what we could do with the time that we had available. And there, there is something in the agreement with the Public Health Coalition that if we sign on, and I believe there's only, in Worcester County, there are only three towns that are not part of a Public Health Coalition, Paxton, East Brookfield and Leicester. All other towns are part of a state-funded coalition where they're getting supplemented services. And so what you can't do once you join one of these coalitions is the municipality is not allowed to reduce its budget. So that's, so I found that out after the Board of Health presented this budget.
So you can't actually take the two thousand?
So the, the state could tell us that we have to pay the coalition the difference or we have to reinvest it back into the budget.
Interesting.
If, if you, if you are part of a coalition, you're not supposed to use the coalition to reduce your.
Your costs. Which makes sense if you're the coalition.
It does. I, I'd been thinking about that for a long time, ever since we signed in to join it. I kept saying, where's, where's the part we're supposed to give? And it was never said that we had to give anything, but now we do know. So we're going to have to come up with something, we can't do it for nothing.
Well, at least you have to level fund.
Right.
But the head of the Mass Association of Health Boards specifically asked their person on this meeting a couple of weeks ago, could you please send me their budget? And he's like, oh, no, I already had theirs. So they were intrigued at how O-Cam was doing public health.
So do you have to level fund to the actual or level fund to the budget?
So the, the wording in the agreement.
Like the library, you have to have a certain percentage?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you don't have much of a say, you know what you spend or whatever.
Used, used funds provided under this program only to augment rather than replace current municipal funding for public health staff or services.
So could you make an argument that it's actual and not budget? Because the only thing that would happen if you stopped doing something you would actually paid for. That's, you know, you're providing a service that is worth X amount of money, even if you had extra money in the account, if you, in the town's account, if you're not spending it, provide that service.
But why are we not providing the services? Because we're dependent on the three volunteers to
To do their.
to do the services. Everything else is being provided by the coalition.
So do you think you need to adjust the budget here?
So that, that's, that's kind of where I'm in a quandary of what does the town, is a town at risk of being told that they have to reimburse the coalition, which is funded by the state?
They might very well have, yeah.
So.
It's, it's like we were just saying, it's kind of like the library, you have to do a certain percentage to meet the restrictions of the state, have to do it with your board then as well.
And I didn't know if, because the town adopted the revolving account, now that fees are going into the revolving account, does it make it whole? But again, that's where I, I'm on the Board of Health and I feel like that should be.
So there's a contract, though, that specifies the language. Is that one of those things you should have outside council or somebody look at and see what they say before you make a decision?
So there's an intermunicipal agreement that because we were so late, we were the last one to join, like in July or whatever it was in twenty-two, they said, just sign this municipal statement of commitment. That was the bare minimum. We were supposed to have signed an IMA, which we never did, we're the only town that didn't. They're now negotiating a new municipal agreement for all of the towns in the coalition. And I have, we have a meeting tomorrow night on that. And there's already a, a draft that the state and the Mass Association of Health Boards, Legal Counsel are working on that they would then present to all of the towns in the coalition to adopt.
And I think you, you've got to do the right thing. I mean, we, it sounds like you're not sure what the right thing is.
Because of that coming up in that meeting two weeks ago, I was like, ooh. I don't know if the town would end up paying a price by our effort to reduce.
The good thing is it's two thousand dollars and not thirty-seven thousand like we just talked about.
Right, right.
So, you know, either way, it's, it's not going to break or not break, it's just, it was a nice
Yeah.
effort on the Board of Health's part. If you can make it happen, I think it's still a good thing. If not, you still hopefully wouldn't spend it needlessly if it's in the budget, so you just go back to free cash.
Right.
For the year.
Right.
Diana or Ani, is there anything you want to add to this?
No, not unless, Diana, not unless there's other questions. Have you covered it all?
No, I'm good.
Said Ariana.
No, I'm good. I think you guys, you know, did a heck of a job back when you had to and, you know, hopefully you keep a good group together.
And it looks like the state is going to continue to fund this. But, and it's a lot of money they're putting into it because they recognize that there's three hundred and fifty-one ways of enforcing their laws, their regulations.
Yeah.
And so now to have, I think, twenty-six coalitions, that's now twenty-six groups that they have to get to do it the right way. But every other town around us, except for New Braintree, does have a staff actually doing the majority of the work and is augmented in a small, much smaller percentage than New Braintree and we are. So at what point does the state say that doesn't seem fair that, you know, these two towns aren't really spending their municipal budget to support?
Taking that, but let's let them take action before you do anything about it.
Yeah.
Okay. I've, I've got other questions.
Thank you, Diana and Ani.
Hi, ladies.
Have a great day. Hey. Thank you, everybody.
That's it for the budget rate?
For tonight, yes. These were the three for tonight. The next one will be Highway, Fire and the Treasurer.
I've got them all on the calendar now. I, I sent them out to both Steve and Corey.
And can I just say something on that and to see what the board will do because I will have to post no later than Thursday for the next, actually, no, it would be in two weeks because next Monday is our regular.
Right.
But either way, moving forward, I think that Highway and Fire are possibly interested in holding the meeting at the
Fire Station.
Safety complex. But it was going to be here because the treasurer is here instead of having her come in on a day that she's not working unless it's Thursday, so.
Zoom in.
Whatever you want, that's why I'm asking for, what do you guys want to do, or she can be altered to a, a different day.
We can put her on a different night.
This upcoming Monday.
Yeah.
One of these is never going to work for Corey, so a different night might be better from the Finance Committee perspective.
Move in the whole schedules?
No, I'm just saying, if, if you guys move it to the fire station, you have to do a different night. Then I just hear you say that's what you might have to do.
I was saying, have the treasurer come in.
Oh, have her.
They want, Fire and Highway would require, were, wanted it to see if they can be done at the fire station.
Understand that.
Right, but then I was saying she's here on Monday, that's why he was going to be here instead of having her, if they switch it to another day, but it's her day off, but she could possibly zoom in or do it on a regular.
We can swap it to another Monday and take somebody out from another Monday and move them into her spot.
Yeah. Either way.
It can, it can be changed.
Yeah.
So whatever the board wants to do.
I do, Mondays are, are blocked off for me always, so Mondays are great to, if we can keep it to Mondays, at least in the short term.
Yeah, but we'll just change it to another Monday that's going to be done here.
Yes.
And you can just tell me, I mean, it's not, the following Monday after that would be probably, I think, March.
March eleventh?
March eleventh.
Planning Board, CBA, Concom, Town Clerk and Parks and Rec. But they're kind of small ones. Those, those are the, the smaller, some of the smaller.
Wednesdays, because that works for both Corey and Steve normally.
And then the last Monday is Historical, COA and Board of Assessors.
Always worked for us, I mean, and Corey and Steve both have been pretty good about getting the schedule. Call it for Wednesday. Corey's really
Yeah, it was level.
Between his personal stuff and the work, he's, he's, he's out straight, so it's hard for him to go any other night.
Sure, sure.
And Steve's the same way, I mean, they both are pretty on-call jobs.
You guys can just let me know whatever you want to.
But I'm available, I'm not going to Tahoe until after the March thing, so.
Oh, okay.
I was, wasn't sure when we were going to go, but I think we're going to wait and go in April when it's not, so.
You did it because of the budget?
No. We did it because of the weather. But, anyway. All right, thanks, guys. I don't know if you've got other stuff you're doing or you done also?
We have new business.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ellen. If I may, under new business, I received a call from Mr. Moran stating that everything, all the electrical work was done and completed down at the Senior Center, they seemed to be very happy with it. And he also, let me just pull it up, questioned, I don't want to say words, let's, let me just pull it up. They finished their electrical work at the Senior Center, but when he went to go check on the guys, he noticed a few things not related to the electrical, the ceiling as you walk in, the door.
It's, don't look.
Don't look. Hold on, it's fallen down and some other things. Does the town have anything set up for donations at the Senior Center? I would like to see that ceiling get fixed. He is donating also the LED lights, he's, he will do it himself and pay the cost and as well as the, getting the ceiling repaired as a donation.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that the board is aware before proceeding or, you know, saying, sure, absolutely. I told them, I'm sure the board would appreciate it, but I will provide the information. I know he, Barbara. provide the information. I know he, Barbara spoke with him too, and she actually, I think, directed them to me. Just so I can inform you guys. So it's not, he'll do the LED lights.
Yeah.
And he will take care of the cost of the ceiling repair. He just would like.
Have to find a carpenter to do the, the ceiling and the entryway.
We just have to make sure they talk to the building commissioner about all that?
Probably. I don't, the lighting maybe not, but
Yeah.
The inside, yes. I wonder if he would have to pull, because I think he did like a permit for the other stuff. So, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe he could fix the door too.
No, I think that's been taken care of.
Oh, it has?
The door is working pretty well.
Okay.
I didn't say perfectly.
I said, after you guys have done at the senior center, send them up my way. So just wanted to let you guys know that that's all.
The problem with the ceiling is that when it rains, it was coming in and that's why the ceiling looks like it does. Because it's not that we haven't poked those tiles back up.
But they're beyond poking them back into place.
But I have a feeling, I haven't seen them being wet since we've had all this rain. I think the gentleman who painted the back here last year, I think he might have cocked where that entryway connects to the main building. I think it may have gotten cocked, so it's not heavy rain coming in like it was. Because I haven't noticed.
I mean, it's fully exposed. So I think if any rain was coming through, it would have been noticeable.
Because that's a news, that was a newer section that was just tacked on to the building at one time or another. And I'm just not sure when it was tacked on to the building, but it could have been around the same time this building was put on. Because that was used as a cafeteria sometimes and the other room was used as a nurse's office. And then one time the other room was used as a kindergarten class.
So then moving forward with that, I guess there would be different ways or possibilities of how to proceed. Maybe it can be quoted invoiced and the invoice can be directly given to Mr. Moran or is there another way? That, that should be handled. And I don't want to assume either, because I didn't talk those, those details that he would be covering the full cost. So I want to make that clear that if he is willing to donate X amount of dollar and it's more than who would eat that cost. I want to cover both ends because I don't know. I mean, it's stated he would do it, but I just don't want to assume either.
Should he provide a proposal?
But he's not doing the work for the ceiling.
Oh, okay.
He, he's just going to
He would just.
But he will pay for the ceiling to be done. We need to find a carpenter that would be willing to do the work.
Maybe get a proposal, get a quote.
We have to come in, look, see what needs to be done and then give us an estimate myself, him what it would be.
And that way, if he says, yeah, I'll cover all of that, or I'm willing to cover this portion, then.
Put the door in.
That's, that's what I was thinking too. Would he, he might know somebody that could do it or he could do it himself.
He might go it himself.
He doesn't want to do it himself, you know?
I know that also Mr. Mike Caruso had stopped in to do some town business and had asked if there was any volunteer work that the town would need, senior center or anything like that. He, him and his wife usually would go away down south, but they, they are not for personal reasons. So he's looking to fill up his volunteer schedule.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
So just wanted to put that out there as well. So I will follow up maybe with trying to get a quote somewhere or see, and, and I guess that would be the first steps.
Yep.
Yeah, I went down there this afternoon. They looked great. The only recommendation I would make to the COA is that they acquire some surge protectors. Because they have the television just plugged in. Although, you know what? They're all ground fault.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So maybe they don't need it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But it looks like they're only, they weren't using surge protectors. So, so you wouldn't want to use it for like the fridge and the microwave, but the TV was just plugged in, but I think they're all ground fault. So I, maybe that replaces the need for a surge protector. Although it limits you to the four outlets.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Not sure.
It does look very nice.
Yeah. They did a great job. And then another quick thing. Jan had, your hand had reached or had talked to me a little while back in the potential or the asking the board if they could use the town hall for their health fair. And she submitted a letter, but the day before I received the letter, she told me that it was all set because they got the church. So I never proceeded with the letter, but then we kept going back and forth. Then it was like, well, what if there's an overflow? So pretty much asking if there, she thinks they should be perfectly fine at the church. But if there is an overflow, if they can use the town hall, whatever room, she initially had said, maybe this room. So I'm, we're not interrupting, you know, any offices out there, but either way, it doesn't matter as long as the board's okay. She doesn't think it will be needed.
I mean, these chairs could easily be pushed right up to the table.
If she did use this, she would, you know, move everything and set it back up. So again,
That's fine.
Probably won't happen, but in case it is needed.
Doesn't look like it's going to be canceled because of snow.
Well, that's right, because it's Wednesday.
Because they did send out a message that if, if it was.
Because initially it was going to be Wednesday, the snow.
It is what? Oh, okay.
Their health fair is Wednesday. The snow is tomorrow.
Sent out a text through email. It was weird. But it did say that if it carried over and the school ended up being canceled on Wednesday too, they would cancel it.
Oh, does she send it to the board?
No, maybe they sent to the board of health, I think.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Oh, yes, because board of health, okay. That makes sense. And that's all I have.
Got an email from Donna Farmer, Chief of Staff.
Oh, yeah.
Don Bertham's office. For our wish list, legislature.
Okay.
We have a wish list.
How many times do we need to tell them what we want?
Well, we got to keep reminding them, the state people.
I know that the fire chief said if that's something that that's thought you guys, you know, submit or if he could.
I don't know what it is. We haven't talked to him. He's got something he'd like to submit. That's fine. But what do we want to submit?
I mean, do we have a list of all the things that need to be done? That's, I mean, when, when they talk about all these grants, it's like, it's great to see the grant, but where's our list and?
But can that be used? This is just me thinking. Can that be used or for school stuff if it's a town building? Like no, like a wish list, like a grant for something like the school repairs, couldn't that fall under that?
Put in the budget.
Well, that's, that's maintenance of a building we own.
Right. I was just thinking like some of those big school repairs might be
Sure.
Something that would be wise because you will have to take care of it.
You know, for a small rural community, maybe they could give us a, some pork.
Every time we send something in, we never hear from them.
And I think that being the school
Includes Mr. Percy.
Would be a good push. You know, that's the building that
But Spencer gets it.
Our kids.
Oh, didn't I notice?
Too bad we didn't know somebody that's, that's on the board of the MMA.
Although I, I did get something that said that they strongly recommend that you not represent your community, but greater than fifty percent of Worcester County towns are rural communities. So I'm representing the majority of Worcester County.
County, yeah.
Where, and we are the two smallest, New Braintree and Oakham.
Yeah. So that was my thought. Anything else?
So school repairs. Whatever Tim's got for the fire.
See, that's stuff that we could say like a well for our library, but we need to get that fixed beforehand.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Because what about like the roof or windows to the libraries?
Right.
Needs to be in. Well, the school has a law, like roof, like yesterday.
Yeah.
Siding for this building?
We got this on, we got this on Sunday, the eleventh. Does that tell you anything?
But I thought we got something from Durant too.
We did.
Okay.
It says for both.
Okay.
They're, they're working.
But she's coordinating.
Okay.
For both.
Okay. But what about siding for this building? It helps to maintain
Town Hall repairs.
A municipal building.
Got some architectural engineering.
But we don't know what that number is.
Oh, we can. We can get a testament on that.
For a municipal building?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that would be great. That's the biggest.
Since we're not asking for a new building.
That's right. Yeah. Yes, yes.
Didn't the library have some big expenses that they needed, like the windows? And what about their lift? It's, that's up and running right now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I said, I'm.
Yeah, she got it.
I haven't heard one way or the other, but that roof is going to have to be done sometime and the windows, she said in particular, the windows this time.
But I mean, I, I can't imagine it would financially make sense if, let's say the, the plywood needed to be replaced on the roof to take all those.
Tile.
Uh, what do they call them? Slate off?
Tiles.
And then put them all back on. I think we'd be better off looking at a metal roof or something like that at that point.
That would take away from.
But they have faux metal roof.
Well, that's true. That's true. You're right. Yeah.
And that, and that will go for fifty years compared to.
Well, that's already gone over a hundred.
Slate, but asphalt would never go.
No, no.
Twenty-five years most.
When I built the air police station, we used the slate looking.
Yeah.
I, I already looked at it a few months ago.
And it was a little expensive, but it had a fifty-year warranty.
And you had the appeal.
Yeah. What would we do with all the tiles that come off the roof?
You can sell them.
I'm, yeah, that's true. I'm sure we could probably get a good price for them.
When my father's tree decker was slate.
Yeah.
And they kept every single one they took off the roof.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Market.
I, I think the architectural design would be something high up on making a case for this community for an earmark.
Yep.
I mean, I've seen Spencer have multiple earmarks put in, so.
Durant.
Mm-hmm, and Bertham. Yes.
And I also just want to report really quickly that I sent my final and last friendly reminder to all boards, employees, committees on the social media policy. That is, was actually due a couple of months ago, but we extended it and it's due by Friday. So on there, I also stated that any department head that has employees underneath them, they're responsible in providing the social media to their, you know, department and getting these forms signed and back to me. I've gotten a good chunk back, not every.
I know the council and agent was working on it.
Yeah, I got all theirs today.
Working on it and then doing an explanation of what it meant, which I thought was very good.
With Facebook?
Yes.
No, council and agent is good.
They went through the whole thing and so remember, we, we represent the town, do this.
And I think it's making it clear, like, you know, some people thought, oh, is it just for the board members and not the employee? That's why today I re-direct, reiterated. It's for board members elected, appointed and in personnel employees. You know, we have some departments, highway is completely done, board of health is completely done, Boris Logman is completely done, COA is completely done. Now we have town clerk, she's done, but then I don't know if that falls for all the election. Yeah, so none of that. Police, the fire chief, and that is it. Fire, I have, I haven't uploaded, but I just got, I have the fire chief and he has the majority of his, his staff all done. So it's just, I know it's, you know, it can be tough, but anything can be sent electronically.
How are we doing on the town reports for the book?
I think we have most of them. I think there's a few that are still missing.
I think the board of health's new clerk might help on that one.
Yeah, you know.
She hasn't been there all year though.
She doesn't know anything from last year. You know, honestly though, I mean.
I got my last two in.
Lucy had a good method last year. If, if it's just for, she did like almost a quick and then just highlights, like pinpoints of things instead of going into like right in these massive, long.
That's all we did last.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It just makes it a little. So. And I, I know that this is not Boris Luckman meeting night for budget, but I did, I, I just want to confirm that you guys all got my email on the print-in books or the print-in budget.
Yeah.
That was from. You got it, right? You look confused, like you did it. It was, we said seventeen hundred, but it was fifteen hundred last year and I gave all the, so I think it can.
You thought it was okay to just?
Level fund.
Okay.
Because I, I just, and I got the quote from, if they use the same numbers.
Right.
What it could be, I stated level fund, no less than thirteen hundred would be my opinion. Obviously you guys would
No, I agree.
Decide on that.
What does the? Is it the bylaw or is it the state general, mass general law that talks about the annual report?
The bylaw.
Okay.
Bylaw.
Because the bylaw doesn't seem to say how it's provided. It just, it, it, it produces an annual report. So if, if we were to find a printer who could do half of what we do printed and we posted it online, you're still meeting the bylaw.
Yeah.
By producing an available electronic copy and some paper ones for people.
And since I've been here, I've always up to, up, done the town reports the last two years.
Electronic.
Electronically.
But that's the first time I've ever seen them electronic in the last couple of years.
Yeah, because, yeah, I, I figured if I have files, I'd just throw it up there. You know, because I just poked around on other websites and then I was like, oh, they all have it there. So let me just throw ours up there too.
Braintree doesn't.
Makes sense. And I, and, and just so you know, I went with Alpha Graphics because that's what was used before and it was like last minute, oh, you have to do this. And, and they were great to work with. I mean, this gentleman, he ended up retiring now, but I mean, I had nothing to, he sent me all the old files so I can go based off. He was super helpful. And we just did the smallest quantity that they can do. So.
Old business.
Website. We just, still waiting on one company to do a demo. A, a thought occurred to me about SharePoint. Although we have signed up very few people to SharePoint. There may be an option on the website to have a, a page that is for employees for things like the personnel policies. If, if it's like the fire department and the police department to just see something, not have to save something. I think we might be able to do that there. But for things like finance and the town departments and the board of health, because it is saving things, we might be able to not have to use SharePoint for everybody. If we can put it on the, a website, there'd be a link for employees.
And that would save, for example, the fire department.
That's correct.
It would make it easier where they, yeah.
But I, I'd still think that if you're a department head and you've got annual reports, like where are those saved? Oh, they're saved on my hard, my hard drive of this computer. Well, save them to the town, on the town server somewhere. So I still think there's a definite need for SharePoint. But I don't know that my initial thought of every employee, if we can do it on the website where you're not having to worry about accounts, having an email for everybody and.
And you shouldn't be, because I know I've seen on other town websites, there's all the rules and regulations or policies in a login, so you can just go in as an, you know, it's not open to the public, but you have to have a login.
They even have like their Harper's payroll is on that page.
Yeah.
So that was something that, that occurred to me last week.
Yeah, good idea.
Because we really haven't added all that much additional annual cost with these changes. Like Harper's is like two thousand dollars or something. It's not a lot and SharePoint was hundreds of dollars. So.
And you have to pay for that each year though?
Yep.
And do you?
But we were not spending
Seven thousand.
On, of, on the budget for IT and website and all of that.
So it's within the budget.
It's definitely within the budget with still a lot to spare.
Yeah, it's not new money going into it.
Do you think other departments, because I only have access to like some?
And that's only because when I was setting them up, I was trying to.
Oh, yeah. No, no, that's fine. But like, you know, has anybody else that scene that you set up, I know.
Yeah.
Have used them a lot or not yet?
Really looked.
Okay. Just, I was just curious.
Got to do something with my.
Yes, I have to, because we're paying for Office 365. So to get you with the full version, you have to log in as administrator to finalize the process. So you can get up to a point of install. So you can get up to a point of install.
See something I can't create.
It won't let you edit without the full version.
Yeah. All right.
Sounds good.
This is sort of new business, but just so you know, I got an email today from the Leicester Regional Public Health Coalition. So that the town is aware that they are working on two grants specific to elder services. I'm looking for increased senior social services that they're working on. So even though they've got like five hundred thousand dollars that they've been given this coalition, they're, they continue to look for more grants for them to offer more services to the towns and their coalition.
What kind of services for elder service?
He doesn't give anything, but I know there's been, and there's a meeting on this tomorrow. But tran- additional transportation that's not covered under your existing budgets is was one of them. A social worker for hoarders, for seen for Meals on Wheels, for things that I think like Rottland has a social worker. We don't, but through the coalition, they're looking to fund a social work position who could do those things.
Okay.
So, so he was just letting letting me know. And have we gotten any up, any inquiries from the bylaw for the bylaw committee?
I have not received anything and I put the BOS email, so that way everybody in case it got overlooked by anyone.
So I wonder if a selling point could be its Zoom option for those people that maybe don't have the ability to come in to to update the ad that it can be in person and Zoom. Because I did take a look at all of the bylaws and personally made recommendations, but I honestly don't think it's all that daunting. If you just sit and.
Right, it isn't. You just take it one piece at a time.
Yeah, and then you cut out all the zoning ones.
Yeah.
So. You know, I I think people probably are afraid of what does this actually mean?
Well, I think they're seeing that Rottland just went through two years of this, but they did zoning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And subdivisions and all that stuff.
And our bylaws are fair minimum as it is.
So it was it.
I mean, we're just not big on regulations, fortunately, so I'm sure they had a lot more.
Oh, I'm sure.
So. So, yeah, and then that was it, website.
Have we heard anything from town council on the liability?
I have not.
Way that we sent in?
I have not, and I did send that. I will. Yeah, touch base again, follow up, see what's the, I have not.
Are we going to put that sign up on the storage unit anyway? Until we hear from council to you guys.
Well, that's from the insurance company, right?
Right.
I've put it up.
And the COA, did they discuss it, do you know?
They asked me if we sent in the, the, the forms and the paperwork that we had come up or that they had come up with, they handed it. Like wanted to know where to put it, so I told them to give it to Maribel and she submitted it right into them with questions about, you know, how much is the town liable for?
Good, so they're taking a role in what, whether they want to do this, whether it's worth the risk as far as the outreach coordinator, did they talk about that? Because it sounded like they were, one, a citizen was asking us whether or not we wanted to have a policy on it, but I I was curious during that meeting, what the COA was interested in.
Yeah, yeah, I get the feeling that with some of those things, they're not comfortable with providing. But they're willing to let those that are not on the council but that come and volunteer like that. You know, it's okay for them to do it because they're not representing the council themselves. So that's, they're kind of, I think, leaning in that way so that they're not going to be carpooling.
Yeah, but they're still a volunteer for the town.
They are.
And and covered by our insurance if they're a volunteer, so they may not be on the board or the council.
Yeah.
But they're still representing the town as a volunteer.
In a way, yeah.
If they sign that waiver, right? But if it's someone that just goes there on their own, they're giving their friend a ride, right? Like if it's.
As long as they haven't helped them find that information.
Yeah, yeah.
A volunteer is still somebody who should be doing the, all the required courses.
Yeah, we don't have too many doing courses.
Well, and that's a concern of mine, because I noticed like, I think there's still question about how you post meeting, like the timeframes for posting meetings and, you know, it's two weeks from appointment that you're required to take the ethics. And I hope.
They didn't mention ethics, but they did mention other things.
But I mean, I I I think people might know more about what the requirements are if they had taken all of those mandatories. And that's where maybe in the new appointments. You know, before they get appointed, maybe they need to understand that there are expectations of posting agendas, posting minutes, posting them forty-eight hours and getting sworn in and taking the ethics every year. Because if anyone filed a complaint, which is unlikely, the town would pay the penalties.
Right. I don't think anybody's ever complained about the.
But now that we're more. Yeah, and I guess that's another question. Finance, board of health, board of selectmen, planning, although planning hasn't had a meeting yet since we adopted this. But I think we should talk about strongly suggesting to all boards and committees to be as fully transparent for people who maybe can't come and and use this software.
Yeah, they talked about that too. Yeah. They looked and they said, well, we have all the instructions here.
It couldn't be any simpler, honestly.
Oh, yes, it could be.
Yeah, you could have me come and do it.
Absolutely. Okay. And Lucy, you're good with the Z, your ZBA stuff, right?
ZB is, ZBA is all set.
And that was posted.
It was posted on the clerk, town clerk's website today as of February twelfth, that it was accepted. It's posted and she has now twenty days and then she signs it.
Is it required to be posted on the website?
It's required to be posted publicly somewhere.
I was just looking at it and see it on here.
It's her.
Now the.
Oh, that's the official rate.
The form right now officially, it's under her directions now, up till the twenty days of listing appeals of the decision.
But my question would be if that's handed over and it's not posted, let's say as of today, in in any case, not this particular case in general, but would it start once it's posted on the website, even if it's dated another day? Like if you dated it today, but it didn't get posted until tomorrow, the day, the time clock would start the dates posted on the website or the dates dated? Well, timestamped on the website.
Today.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the timestamp, like.
I forgot.
That's why like, nobody really needs to be doing the.
Yeah.
On the agendas, because it it doesn't matter. It's what shows up on the website as the posting time.
Right. It's not a posting.
I just don't see it on here at all, so I just, I just want to make sure that it's.
And she said she would put it up. I gave it to her today. It's all signed by us. I told her she can't sign it yet. She can't sign it until the twenty days are up. And then she can put it back up if she wants to with her signature on it, but that's the form that I have to send to the applicants. And it will make it complete, but they did get approved.
Yeah, nice. And do, at some point, are we gonna look into the posting of the clerk position since it's going to be on the ballot? Do we need to be sourcing potential applicants for that? Because come May. I mean, there's going to be a nomination.
Tight, very tight timeline.
And and I believe the current interim is only going to stay until.
That's what she, that's what she told me today. She's not going to run for the position. She said it's just too involved.
And I wonder about the assistant town clerk, if we should look into that as well.
How much, how much, how many hours would an assistant town clerk be?
I would say that would be per diem when needed.
Oh.
But if there, if there needed to be a carryover.
As needed.
Yeah.
And then if she's needed to take over, then she's getting the pay of the clerk.
But there's a lot of work going on. I mean, I know nomination papers still have to go out. So.
I signed for several ballot boxes today, took pictures and put them in the office as I would do with the prior town clerk, just for record keeping and.
Yeah.
So just doing my part on teamwork and being a good coworker.
More balance.
Or boxes for, from, I I don't know if they're ballots or whatever, something for the.
Secretary of State.
It could be. I didn't really look. I I apologize. Maybe they're not ballots, but something for the town clerk's office, I should say.
Okay.
Yep.
And the twenty-five chairs should be here on Wednesday. And they are stackable. They're not going to be as padded as those. But I guess we have to give and take.
Yep.
To make everybody happy.
Thank you, yes.
And I did look on Minnesota bid and I did look for office supply stores, everybody. Or or used office and at the end of the day.
I didn't find anything.
This is the best thing and it's far below what was requested in in budget.
Yeah.
So the only other thing that I was thinking was they do have for like ninety dollars, the square things that you could stack them on so that you could move them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like a big dolly.
Yeah, so if if you're okay with that, once they come in, I would recommend that we purchase however many can stack the number of dollies.
Yeah.
Under that chair approval. And then the other thing I wasn't sure is if we could order on Amazon the the cover for these wires.
Yep.
Just before they get.
Do you want to order them or you want me to order them?
I'm happy to order. I just didn't know how it gets paid for.
Oh, I'll put it under like town hall or one of the, I mean, you guys want to do it out of the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, expenses, something.
This will do.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't, how much is in that line item?
Yeah, I think there's still plenty. I think.
Can you speak with Wendy? Can we get a breakdown of all the trust funds that was in them?
Because we don't get any regular reporting.
We do not.
No, but there's, the investment company has all that.
That's the other thing that we haven't budgeted is all the interest, because we weren't, we weren't going after all the interest in in your test. And so when we're talking about revenue available to fund.
Yeah.
We have new revenue potentially because she just is working on getting us, you know, if we have a million dollars now in stabilization, that's a million dollars to collect interest.
Yeah.
When it used to be whatever.
Right.
And I did submit, and I'm happy if you send me the form for the MMA conference.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll turn it in when I do my warrant under the art brought stuff. Yeah.
It's, you haven't received anything from MMA for the conference itself.
Not an invoice, no.
Says that they would do it after.
Yes, but that's usually how it.
Usually months.
I'm surprised. How do they fund it? I guess Maya must be making, I didn't realize they were connected until.
So it's two days, but it's.
So my, my only question on this is, is it really time off if all the hours are made up?
Not really.
So when we, when we look at budgeting, we're basically paying twice. We're paying for time off and then we're paying for.
But does she put an in for time off when she takes time off?
I I don't know, but it's a time off request.
Yeah, I think she's just letting you know she's.
Yeah.
But I don't think.
That's an issue that she's never going to use her time off.
Can talk to her when she comes in.
Yeah. And and maybe this is just a busy, really busy season and hopefully at some point she can actually take time off and not have to make it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think she's still catching up a little bit, transitioning, you know, making strides for sure, but still doing that, yeah.
And I did tell her that the fire chief was fine with going to monthly. But that for the per diem stipends or whatever, that they on call. And she said that is definitely done. Some towns are quarterly every other month. And so she was going to work with the chief on rolling that out and not putting them part of the time and attendance on Harper.
Yeah.
But police would not, but they would get, continue to get paid every two weeks.
Yeah.
There's really no benefit with them not getting time off for the the non-full-time people. They don't need to be part of that time and attendance, extra three fifty per month.
Okay.
Because we're not tracking their, their time.
Yeah.
With the department, so there is a record.
But do they get, do the non? Do the non-full-time people get time off? Yeah, so I don't, there's no time off to.
There's no part timer that has a schedule.
Right, right. So there's, there's no time to.
But they book, they book according to what they're.
Yeah, yeah.
Public session, anybody?
Yeah. They're all quiet tonight.
We do that at the port of health. So moved.
Hi.
Hi.